Everybody, I'm Art Whitman, Chair of the Shasbury Select Board, and I like to call this meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order. On Monday, June fifth, two thousand twenty-three at six thirty P M. Uh, first order of business, is there anything on the agenda that anybody has in a conflict of interest with?
No.
No.
Uh, next, we have some minutes for the last two meetings. Uh, due May first, first, let's see who was here, Naomi. Think everybody was here. Um, so, uh, entertain a motion to accept the minutes of May first. So move my mic.
Second.
Second by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor say hi.
Hi.
Opposed, so carried five zero zero.
I want to amend my statement about conflict of interest. I was just realizing, um, under number nine, the Community House, I am the President of the Shasbury Community Club, so I will step out during that. Portion of discussions.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I have minutes from May fifth, I'm sorry, fifteenth. Uh, let's see, myself, Tony, Mike, Naomi. I don't see Martha's name there.
Was that?
The fifteenth.
Oh, probably, yeah, I wasn't.
Okay.
So Luke.
Uh, motion by Mike to.
Second.
And so, uh, second by Naomi. Any discussion?
Good.
All those in favor say hi.
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 I will abstain.
Opposed, one abstention, so we have four zero one. We have some ones. Uh, first one is check warrant number forty. For one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars, and this is to Insurance Services Incorporated.
It's a fire department, uh, that's their own insurance.
Yeah, and it looks like a stream alter and a permit for.
Yeah, through the, um, Humble Hill work, I'm sorry, the Ranger Hollow work, they didn't want us to have a permit. Two hundred bucks.
One thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Entertained a motion to accept. So move by Mike.
Second.
Second by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor say hi.
Hi.
Opposed, so carried five zero zero.
Melanie, tomorrow, can, can you leave that or those checks with me because I have to send them out right away? I, I will be in the afternoon, I have a appointment in the morning.
Yeah.
But I have a special envelope for the insurance company.
Goes to the right place.
Could you send me an email? Because I, I can automatically put them in the mail, so.
I know, yeah, okay.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
No payroll warrant.
No payroll.
Okay. Next is check warrant number thirty-nine. Thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifteen cents.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Items over a thousand dollars is Affleck for a thousand fifteen dollars, another one for a thousand fifteen. Uh, Innovative Surface Solutions, which is our, uh, dust control, five thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Okay, uh, V L C T Property and Casualty Insurance, eighteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars. And that's, that's it for over a thousand. Any discussion? All those in favor say hi.
Hi.
Opposed, so carried five zero zero. Public announcements, uh, one thing that is on the agenda is that. A while back, uh, it was discussed about coming up Church Street and not being able to see pulling out, so we got a hold of the state, the state. Did grant a permit to mark that off and.
It'll be a hundred feet, uh, running north from the, uh, northwest corner, so it's about to the where the driveway is. When you, when you start looking north on the western side. Uh, going to affect this is, is a work order has gone out to state, uh, as soon as it's painted, it's in effect. And they, they open up the signage and everything.
And will that also include the bus stop that is supposed to be there as well, but in the, okay, in the line signage or things like that?
Yeah. So that'll be, as soon as they paint it, it'll be in effect.
So violators will then be, can be prosecuted.
Yeah, yeah, and, and all the vehicles belong to the apartment house that has parking on the side. And I, I did speak with the owner of the building prior to putting this into the state and after it was approved, so they're aware of it.
Any other public announcements?
Um, the Planning Commission is hosting, um, a public meeting on June fourteenth, right here. At what time is that?
Six P M.
Six P M, thank you, um. The, about the enhanced energy plan that we're developing and hoping for. Uh, a lot of participation and presence, the B C R C will be making a presentation about it.
So, thank you. Anybody else got anything? Up to public comments.
Okay.
Welcome.
Hi.
Well, good evening, uh. Do you want to start?
So if you wouldn't mind, just coming on up, just because this is the speaker up here, if you want to just bring that chair and get the hot seat for the moment.
Uh, well, good evening, my name is, uh, Rich Jorgensen, and, uh. Some of you may know me, and I'm a resident of Bank Street, um, thirty-nine Bank Street is where my family resides, and we've. Been residents of Shasbury since nineteen eighty-seven. Uh, I've been following the, uh, discussions regarding sidewalks on Grandview Street and Hawks Avenue. Uh, and the, uh. Corresponding discussion of speeding, which is a chronic problem, as you're all aware, and I'm here to speak to that as well. And we'll continue to speak to it. As, as a resident of that neighborhood. Uh, despite a standard on the fifteenth, there was a discussion of sidewalks, but also, um, David's, uh, planned discussion with Sheriff Gully regarding. Uh, increased patrols, and I was curious as to an update on how that's proceeding.
I will, well, I've spoken with the sheriff, I won't have like a patrol sheets for another few weeks.
Okay.
But I, I know they've gone over there, also ask B C R C, which I checked the other day, it still wasn't up. To re-survey the street and hawks, because we had done hawks once before, uh, just to see the update on the speed and the volume and, uh. You can sometimes determine the size of vehicles.
It does discern, it does determine the size.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, it was supposed to be up three weeks ago, they have one in the whole county. Uh, I spoke to Jim a couple of weeks ago, I thought it'd be up by now, but it still isn't, so it probably just got hung up somewhere else.
I know I've advocated for, uh, digital, uh, speed monitors, uh, much like we have on Route seven. Uh, entering Shasbury and, uh, leaving Shasbury, actually, both are entering Shasbury from the north and south. Um. I know there's some disagreement as to their effectiveness, um. But maybe increased share controls will be helpful, they've been helpful in the past, uh, they've been, uh, sporadic at best three years. Um. Bank Street is, uh. My concern, as it's hawks, I walk on hawks, I bicycle on hawks, Grandview less so, um. But, uh, we're starting another summer season, and, um, speeding is a year-round issue, but particularly in warm weather.
Hmm.
And, um. You know, some relief isn't, uh, I don't probably need to. Speak strongly enough about that, I believe everyone's aware of that, uh, I know Mr. Griffin certainly travels the road regularly, um. Um, doesn't exceed the speed limit, but just about everyone else does.
Yeah.
Uh, so it is, it is a risk for our neighbors, myself, or my family just crossing over. To the other side of the street where our mailbox is. So, you know, anything that can be done. More consistently, uh. You know, whatever combination of things in terms of, uh, strategies. Certainly, there is a twenty-five mile per speed limit, which I believe is the minimum limit possible. Um. But, you know, how to slow people down, this is obviously the, uh, question we're all seeking to answer. I know there's an effort going on in North Bennington as well to. Address their speeding, uh, issues, uh, which come from. Bennington as well as by and large entering the village from Shasbury.
Hmm.
Uh. You know, the, uh, traffic on Bank Street as well as Route sixty-seven converging right there at the. Uh, entry to North Bennington is a significant problem, and speaking with many neighbors. Including parents of children in South Florida School, at North Bennington Village School. Um, things are at a very high level of, of, not only frustration, but fear, more important fear, people are now very fearful.
Hmm.
Of even walking on sidewalks. As of how people are driving down these very narrow streets, so, um. I know some issues have been addressed, uh, perhaps in terms of truck volume, size of trucks, many trucks. Certainly, uh, utilize the neighborhood, Bank Street, um, Hawks Avenue. I did some research regarding statutes like this, maybe. Uh, challenged by the fact that statute allows for, um, something the agricultural vehicles, um. That are utilized, uh, for business purposes, land and farm, cooling grains, and K agricultural services. Um. And trying to figure out. Which, uh, which limits apply, but seemingly it's very high limit, sixty thousand pounds, uh. Uh, for agricultural vehicles and maybe even higher, uh, some mention made of eighty thousand, so. We don't seem to have the, uh, construction traffic like we've had in the last few years, maybe with water lines being completed in Bennington, but, uh, that was, uh. Very problematic, and maybe will repeat itself, um, for other purposes.
Hmm.
So, how we slow down people, heard of my standing on the road with a slow. Which I'm concerned, uh, but, uh. People don't obviously obey speed limits, so. And I guess ticketing has worked in the past as much as no one likes to have. Law enforcement involved, but that has worked in the past, so. Um, if, if it comes to that, where. At the entrance to Shasbury, there's a shaft on Bank Street. Uh, or someone positioned, uh, you know, at North Bennington Variety Store, if someone enters Shasbury on Bank Street. Uh, you know, that may be something that, uh, has to happen, so.
Hmm.
Uh, I look forward to any more information as it becomes available.
Sure.
Uh. I'm sure the sheriff is doing an assessment of. The, maybe the best times.
Yeah, and, and we, we will be looking into, there's lots of variables, and we don't have a lot of hours.
Yeah.
So I know there's an expectation, but at ten hours a week, it's not going to be. Always seen when they're there.
Right.
But we're going to make sure that they're, they're, especially Grandview Speed, actually, it's very close to twenty-five miles now.
Right.
All the time, and, and Hawks was similar the last time we did it, so we'll see what comes up this time in Banks, uh. There's a trooper who moved in there for a little bit, his car was always up front, that helped a great deal, but, uh, you know, uh, well, we got a moment of bank speak, so.
Yeah, I think it's important, uh, because it's a gateway, you know, uh, into the community, and, uh, it's, uh. It's probably where people are likely to speed the most, uh, local residents, uh, fellow Shasbury residents, our, um. Neighbors, uh, from New York, uh, and, um. You know, how to slow that, that down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know Grandview Street, it's, it's regrettable that, uh, in my opinion, most of the people that maybe are. Speeding or sort of speeding, and maybe they're not speeding that much, are all, you know, local residents, not, you are receiving great.
Yeah.
Uh, necessarily, it's just people who live in the neighborhood, you know, they're just, they're in a hurry to get down the hill and into. The village or to go east on sixty-seven.
Hmm.
To go off to their workplaces, but, uh. Certainly early in the morning and in the evening, anytime during the day for that matter, so. Is a ten-hour limit, uh, it's a budgetary constraint on the part of, uh, the town.
It does.
Um, it's also the Sheriff's Department, uh, the old leadership hadn't been able to meet the hours we actually were contracting with them. For the last three or four years, so we're working on, he's working on more staffing, more properly certified.
Right.
Officers, and that'll help a great deal, because the board had, if you were looking for it on this budget year, uh, increasing the enforcement rate significantly.
But, but.
They didn't have anybody to do it, so.
Until then, they hadn't even fulfilled the ten hours, so it didn't make much sense to.
To increase the hours, but they don't have the personnel.
The new, the new sheriff in town is, is a big difference.
Yeah, big difference.
Good, well, I'll.
So, we'll be looking at the budget.
Yeah.
Again.
Right, well, that's, uh, basically, I just wanted to, uh, appear and, and, uh. Uh, express my concerns as to residents, and, um. Uh, we'll continue to do so, as I said earlier, and looking at all the strategies.
Okay.
If there's a constraint on the sheriffs, then I really strongly suggest we look at the digital lines.
Hmm.
Um. I know it's, seems to be working on, you know, Route seven, eight, entering, uh, Shasbury, just slowed down myself earlier today.
Yes.
Coming up along the verge, so, uh, it, uh, maybe has, you know, value in, in our Bank Street neighborhood.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. The bottom.
It's nice and warm.
Yeah.
I call it Colbert, I live at one ten Hawks Avenue, which is pretty much in the middle of this street, I've lived there for twenty-one years. I do want to say that when I first moved to Hawks, there was no traffic on our street. Only people that ever drove on Hawks Avenue were the eleven houses that, people that lived there, and that was pretty minor, um. Since then, kids grew up, moved away, but we now have a lot more children again, there's at least. About maybe eleven kids on the street, and some of them are toddlers, and one, and one is a teenager. So, um, safety is definitely a concern. As far as speeding goes, I find it hard to believe that most people were clocked to going twenty-five miles an hour, because I would swear on a Bible that nobody. Goes twenty-five miles an hour except the people who live there, and we are continually sworn at, given the finger, yelled at, horns blowing at us. Just because you're trying to turn into your own driveway and you're going safely and cautiously. Um, the worst times of day are when people are commuting back and forth to work, especially when they're going back and forth to any of the. Businesses that have shifts. So, seven o'clockish in the morning, three to five in the afternoon are pretty bad times, weekends are much quieter. Um. Rich had already looked up the statutes around, um, agricultural vehicles. Because my contention was that a commercial vehicle, even though it supplies materials that might be used on a farm. To, to me, I wouldn't consider that an agricultural vehicle, but we also have plenty of dailies trucks come by, we have logging trucks.
Right.
I mean, great big huge logging trucks, and then, um, a few weeks ago, when Landview was constantly, at least every twenty minutes. There was a Landview truck on the street, they were even coming east and west at the same time, you couldn't even maneuver anywhere on the street. And maybe something could be done about them, if they're going to use the street, and if it's supposed to be fine for them to use the street, maybe they could pace. Their trucks differently, so that it isn't such a continual barrage of them over and over and over again. Um, and then, the, a few years ago, when we had, um. The Shires building the apartments on a parent road.
Hmm.
Neighbors and I clocked a construction vehicle every five minutes of the day, every five minutes. That's twelve construction vehicles an hour for an eight-hour day, you couldn't go anywhere on the street. I mean, that's excessive, I understand that there, I mean, Rich and I were talking about. Where else are they going to go? There are a lot of streets in and out of North Bennington and in and out of Shasbury, so they're going to have to use these streets. But it gets to a point where the people who live on the streets are not having the quality of life that they used to have, and, and for the reason that they had moved to those neighborhoods. Um. And I, and I just want to also add, he already spoke about the sheriffs, that, um, ever since the state. Improved the downtown intersection by the left bank and the, um, gas station, it has gotten so much worse. Because nobody wants to use that intersection, not cars, not trucks, not anyone wants to use that intersection. So those are my thoughts, and, um, uh. Would like to definitely see a sheriff presence. Couple of times a day, maybe just driving by and, and actually stopping people who are speeding. Or else we can start making citizens arrests or something. But thank you for hearing me out.
You, Paula, we appreciate it.
Mr. Jorgensen, can I ask you a question before you leave?
Sure.
What's your thoughts or opinion on all the garbage cans that are left outside the road seven days a week on Bank Street?
People leave out on the roadside.
Yep. Bears have gotten into them, there was one tipped over this morning, I don't know if it was a bear or a dog.
Yeah. Why don't people will put them out, uh. Pickup, uh, sometimes the night before.
On Wednesday, on Tues- Tuesday night to, for Wednesday pickup, but there are a lot of them, oh, there are seven days a week.
Yeah, I'm thinking of my immediate neighbors and, uh. They typically put them out and bring them in as soon, soon as they're empty, and maybe one neighbor where it's left out longer. Uh, you drive the length of the road.
Eighty-three Bank Street has four of them out there, so, eighty-three Bank Street has four of them out there, seven days, seven days.
They don't go up that street that frequently.
Okay.
Uh, that might have been the, uh, location of the, uh, the bear this morning.
No.
Yeah.
It was, but, okay.
So we have another bear, actually.
Yeah, the one was killed over on sixty-seven, and there's another one.
Another one disappeared, so there's a family in the area, and, uh, so that, that's, you know, a challenge, you know. You know, we're sharing habitats, obviously, you know, as I expected, uh, so, uh, speed figures and being a black bear, you know, out at night is.
Yep.
Not advisable, but, uh, certainly people are putting out their trash cans and not, you know. That's going to attract the bear and, uh.
There, there is no garbage can ordinance in Shasbury, and we're wondering if we should have one.
So.
Hmm.
Maybe, uh, you know, just, they have to be approached, because the bear will keep coming, you know, it's traversing Route sixty-seven.
Yeah.
You know, from the woods, you know, coming into the village, you know.
Good.
It's not just about bird feeders, it's about, you know, what's in those big trash containers.
Just, just getting as much information as we can, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey. Melanie. It's really practice.
Yeah, I didn't expect to be here, so I didn't, um, I didn't get day reports, but I could sort of talk anyway, I think I wasn't here at the last meeting, and. Uh, I did have reports for that one, so.
Yes, we saw.
Okay, so, um, I don't know if you had any questions about anything from, since I missed the last one, okay? Um, water is due this week, so, uh, make sure that you get your, uh, your payments into me by, I believe it's the, the seventh, that would be Wednesday. Um, if, uh, you almost forget, you can still make payments online, um, so don't, you don't have to worry about getting them to me in the mail. Um, just go to, uh, shasburyvt.gov and choose, uh, the pay bills, and there's a section specifically for water bills. Um, the, I haven't looked at the bank balances today, I have been keeping an eye on, on them. Every day, this time of year, uh, we look like we have plenty of cash to get us through the end of the fiscal year, which ends this month. Um, and then I will need to keep a close eye on it to see whether we need to get a line of credit, um, in anticipation of. Uh, the tax payments coming in, but right now it looks. Um, pretty good, um, I think probably we won't need them, as I always say this time of year, it depends on getting the tax bills out, um, in a timely manner. Um, I think that's all, and, and I think I mentioned last time I was here that our, um, external auditors are coming the first time later this month. I think the twenty-second.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, so that's, uh, just before the end of the fiscal year, um, so we'll all be very busy, running around getting stuff for the auditors. Um, any questions about anything?
Just a comment, we had a water board meeting before this meeting, and we were informed that there is still money available. Through the state for paying the water bills, and we're encouraging people that have a bank balance to.
Yeah, I think it's winding down.
Extended it again.
Oh, they did?
I put it on the webpage and Josh is going to mail out to those who are in arrears.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it always seems to be ending, and then it continues a little bit longer.
Okay, um, is there a way to get, like, with, with the, I, I guess we're not, Josh tells me we're not putting hangers on people's doors anymore?
No, he stopped that, that's, yeah, that's kind of all I can notice is now that we're going to turn your water off. But Jim used to hang them if you were in arrears.
Yeah.
But in this, for the, those who are. A little bit above the normal, like, missing this payment, like, they were too late for this payment.
Hmm.
But we're going to get this out to everybody, uh, who's in arrears, so that.
Okay.
Those who want to take advantage of it can before it just vanishes. It's a, I, it keeps it sane because they're, can't give it away, which is taken.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, well, I, you know, I, I didn't discuss this with Josh, but I, I kind of liked the hangers, because if, if people who. Claim that they never received it in the mail, that's at least reaching them a different way, you know, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, that would.
We know that the, that the mailing addresses are not completely clean, and, um, I don't know, it just.
Yeah, I, I was surprised when you said that last week.
You don't get very many responses, but I mean, getting one is better than zero.
Get a lot of complaints, but.
Yeah, well, anyway, I, I just thought if we were going to contact people who were in arrears, it would be good to inform them of that program.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I want to do, and those are going to be mailed to all the addresses, just so it comes in the mail.
Yeah, they say.
Well, yeah, but there's limits for what we can do.
Well, yeah, but there's limits to what we can do.
Yeah.
And
Okay, well, when, when I get partial payments from people, I can, I can, in person, I can hand them the
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously.
Yeah, it's on the webpage. You can even download the, the attachment, the program.
Okay. Yeah, that's good. Anything else?
No. Not for me.
Thank you.
Okay, sewer feasibility study grant application.
Same beautiful multi-colored form. This is for the state revolving loan program. This is for the municipality. It is a step-one clean water loan feasibility and planning grant.
So did we get it?
No.
We didn't get the last one.
Well, we didn't have a pipe last one because we missed the timing after it was full, so they decided this in July. So this is all prepared. This is the last step. It is for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which we are in equity borrowing. We don't have to lay back, but we go through the loan program. They can be funded by the ARPA funds to the state. So this will allow a study of either community septic or a full-scale sewer system for the village. And we cut it back from the last time when it was done a couple of decades ago, I think. Because that was the neighbors and everything else. This is here in the village. Where the waterline runs is, except for sixty-seven and Twitchell Hill is the original area, but we really kind of focusing on what can actually be done to service a smaller area. Because you still have the issue if you go for a full sewer system. Our three hundred water customers then have to all pay a substantial amount of money to connect to it to make it viable, and that's a whole other issue. And that's also voting that has to go along with that. And that may not be an easy sell.
It wasn't last time.
No, yeah, you can read all the, the information and it wasn't last time. But this will give us a much better idea of what is practical here.
It's great. We still owe thirty-five thousand dollars for that one, though.
Yeah.
The one we did is still on the books and they said you only have to pay it when you put in a sewer system. We haven't put one in, but it's still in the books.
Maybe it doesn't count, just so you know. The sewer system is what you, what you put in for, whatever that was. So if we do a community septic, which is a smaller thing, you don't have to pay that.
Right.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So move by myself.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? So carried, five zero zero.
This is
Hopefully, yes, we will.
Yeah.
We will be on the list this time to get this funding.
I think we have a very good chance. I know that there's been discussion of how we're going to and who's gonna perform the study. So I think we're in a pretty good position. It's time to get the grant, to get the money. So that's kind of a key.
Piece of our shebang here.
Yeah, be very helpful to know what's possible.
The one we did, the, the ARPA survey.
So I'm gonna step out.
Well, no, would you please, please stay for the first part?
Okay.
Because I need yours. So what I would like you to do was just explain what what, what were the things that people wanted, in other words.
Oh.
So there's, there was the
So for the Shasbury Historical Society made a proposal to the ARPA committee for twenty thousand dollars. That was to use as a matching fund for summer repairs that were going to happen, I believe, at the Governor of the Lucia House. And then the Shasbury Community Club, which is over an Old Depot Road in North, not North Benning, North Shasbury, was fixing the roof and they had had two proposals. One was for, I believe, twenty thousand for half of the roof. And then there was an additional proposal that happened later that was for sixty-seven thousand-ish dollars. There was some kind of odd number about that. To repair the entire roof structure and re-slate and shingle that area.
And it was a suggestion of the committee that we, that we do both of those.
So that was the ARPA committee recommendation. We had an economic development committee meeting and we were kind of going through the recommendation list of things and we were like, oh, this was something that kind of fell down on the list, but we thought and we voted as an economic development committee to bring back to the board to say, let's get this money out to both of these organizations so they can start working on finding contractors, the matching loans, those kinds of things.
I'd like to take them one at a time so you can be here for the first one. So the historical society would like twenty thousand dollars, but it's a matching thing. In other words, we just don't give it to them. They have to show that.
Well, it's to help them get a grant.
Yeah.
They have to show that, that the town is matching their grant.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're communicating so that we were authorized, the board should authorize the disbursement of twenty thousand dollars to the Historical Society to match other funds they raised. How does that sound?
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
I can make a motion.
Let's motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, five zero zero. Okay.
Now I'll just step out for a moment.
Well, you can make, you can make comments.
I don't go too far because
But I will sit here because I will not be voting because I have a conflict to be
But we're gonna question you as the president.
Okay. I will be voting, just I'll be on the other side of the board.
We all, the total amount, I know originally it was for one section.
It was for the
Right.
Yes, one half of the, the side of the building, which I think was the south-facing side of the building, which was an easier fix because the north side has the steeple part and is
But that's, that's the increase.
So the increase was that, yeah, because it was, because the steeple was there. And I think there are a few other structural things that made that more difficult, that side more difficult to do.
I guess the, the ask is we have more demands on the ARPA money? So is this something the community center would think of reverting back to the first request? And get that part going?
So I suspect that, yes, they would, they would say that that would be fine. They would start one side or maybe the harder side and then figure out how to fundraise the other side of the and it may be potentially more equitable to do it that way for both of the community centers to kind of each get twenty thousand dollars. But.
It's, it seemed to me, if I'm remembering right, from the ARPA committee, that it was that first south-facing side that was in much worse shape.
Yeah.
Yes, and I think
So it was the urgent side, although it was also the easier side. Do you
Okay, that may be why they had set up. There was a reason, but I
But it's in such bad shape that they could no longer, and Corolla, Rick Kobic was saying he's afraid to go up there anymore.
That's not good.
Yeah.
Right. And it's interesting in that the Historical Society buildings are, at this point, no longer able to be used for presentations that they do, and so they're actually renting the North Shaft Community Club to do a historical presentation this summer because the buildings have sustained. The Galusha House has sustained some pretty serious water damage.
Wow.
So I don't know how they're, but I think they're gonna be using some of this money to match some other grants that they're working on trying to get to try to repair that so that they can have the public back in again.
So I guess we need to, let's start with a motion and then we can have some discussion.
How about a motion to fund the original request to do the repairs to the south side of the community house? Which I wish I had the number in front of me, but it won't let me into my records here. But the original request was to do the south side. I agree because that's what they came and said was the most difficult one. So the board approves the transfer of ARPA funds to do the repairs in the community house, faith one, as the first proposal from I think Rick Kobic presented.
He did, yes.
That makes sense to everybody?
I'm a little bit hesitant about making specific, that we say a certain side. Can we just give them, can we just twenty thousand?
Twenty thousand, then you figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, you're
Yeah, Rick, I have no doubt.
I just, I think that's
Yeah, make a motion to transfer twenty thousand dollars of the ARPA funds to the North Shasbury Community House.
And do it immediately?
Yeah.
There's a motion.
First, I'll be the, I'll move to do this. Twenty thousand dollars to the North Shasbury Community.
I'll second that.
Second by Tony. Now we can discuss.
It seems like a really good compromise to me, and it seems to me also important for, to the morale of the town around these funds, that we get some of it going out.
Just so I understand, we're not giving them the whole amount now?
That's right.
Because just so they can move on this immediately, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, there was no the ARPA committee, our recommendations to the select board, they aren't, you know, obligations. So this is kind of an amendment to that. When we settle, the way I'm viewing it, when we settle with our ARPA funds, there may be more as we progress along to, to contribute to this.
And the others, discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, four zero zero. Do we have to show her that she abstained because she actually got away from the table?
She left the table.
So that's, it's still four zero zero.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. Okay. David sent out RFQs for
No, we have
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I must have an old, I don't, I don't have one. I'm missing one. Transfer station, new rate schedule adoption. Okay.
Okay, well, we spoke about this the last meeting or two meetings ago. It's been posted on the town webpage, there's the comments. I received one comment from a person who was upset at increasing costs of everything. And that twelve-pound bag would now be two dollars and it is two dollars now. The smallest bag, it hasn't changed at all. I was just confused. It's the same. Our rate structure is the same pretty much as Bennington, the Sunland Transfer Station, the Palos Transfer Station. They all do per bag. They do not weigh things. So I think this is just for convenience with the cost of maintaining that scale as small as it is, it costs close to eight, nine hundred dollars a year. So the change is really just per bag. Instead of weighing the twelve pounds, we don't always get the most accurate weighs. So if you come in with a thirteen-gallon bag, it's two dollars. That's very equivalent to the twelve pounds. A thirty-gallon bag is four dollars, which is actually not a bad rate, and that's what the other towns charge. And then it slowly progresses up. There's no change. The yard waste. There's no change to recycling miscellaneous, which is everything from bikes, the speakers, microwaves, vacuums. That'll all change, stay the same at ten dollars. No change was to appliances, with or without freon, they're all gonna be fifteen dollars. Because we have a separate contract through Casella, that a company comes and brings the freon. So whether it's in or not, we have to go through them all, so it's fifteen dollars. And let's see. We are making some adjustments to tires, because tire is a real problem. When you get new tires, pay the five dollars and leave them there, please, because we're gonna charge you six dollars. Because it's, they all have to be moved and that price at six dollars probably will not last long either. Because it's expensive to get rid of, maybe getting new tires, really just leave them with the dealer. We're also gonna start charging three dollars to small garden tractors tires because we suddenly are getting small garden tractor tires. And we have to pay to get rid of them. I mean, there's nothing we can do with these. What we do is we turn them into Bennington Tire and we have to pay them to get rid of them. There's just no way around it.
The small tractor suffered from COVID too.
Yeah. I mean, I constantly have to fill the front tire, but I'll so it's gonna be that way. We're not taking truck tires anymore at all. No tractor tires. Somebody slipped in a giant tractor tire. It's gonna cost a fortune to get rid of. You know, we're just not doing any of that anymore. Where you get your giant truck tires and your tractor tires, we need the old ones with the dealer. The big thing that is not anything really to do with us right now, and all these things are on the town webpage, is we are in the final stages of building a county hazmat site, hazardous materials drop-off site. It's not hazmat site. Down at the Bennington Transfer Station, they'll have regular hours. They'll be no more than biannual meetings, you know, drop off thing with the huge line. You can just make appointments and drop off when you'd like to, so that'll be really convenient. So what we'd like to do is, what I'm asking for is approval of the new rate schedule so that we can make a new sign and spend the next couple of weeks and people act related to the idea of you just paying per bag now. It'll also make our accountants happy because they like receipts and things and the scale and everything just doesn't work that way. It's very difficult.
When are you gonna make it effective?
Like for fiscal year.
So, so so will you have signs up by then?
Yeah, I can have signs up next week hopefully, just so people see them and get used to the idea.
So there'll be signs and, but we don't start charging until July first.
July first. And we're charging essentially the same amount anyway, so it's just to make it more manageable. It'll be easier for the tenants to keep track of how many bags someone is walking over with, rather than the people, you know, walk by the scale with the bag and it's always two dollars, you know. So I think it just will work out. None of the other towns have had a problem with, with covering their costs with this either, so.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt this new rate schedule.
To go into effect?
July first.
July first.
Okay.
Second?
Second by Naomi. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, five zero zero. What else am I missing?
No, now you're, I think, back to the call hall.
Yep. Call hall.
Yeah. Okay, so we, I said around, we had, we see three responses to our request for qualifications. They're actually all very good. We have one that is from Brownborough with offices or colleagues in New York City and Rutland. One in Burlington and Goldstone out of Bennington. So the call hall committee is supposed to be given, pick one of these, most of the call hall committees sick and will not be here all week, so that would leave me and Art as the last members of the committee.
And I think maybe potentially me because there was supposed to be a bridge between the Economic Development Committee and call hall.
So what we can do is if everybody reviews these or the three of us review these, Marlene's not gonna be pumped in for the week, so I will just move on. She obviously had the big part in the final work of this, this is gonna transform downstairs.
Right.
But I've spoken to Art about this. We can speak.
Sure, I have. I've read through all of them.
On Wednesday morning, then I can get back to whoever we want to talk about it. Yeah, we'll talk about it. We have a meeting with these other people, so.
So there's no, no discussion, no motion tonight?
No, because the committee is supposed to decide how many, if any, we interview. And then we make a recommendation to the select board, same as we did with, with the other program. But as long as everybody has these, I just want to bring you up to date because Marlene's not here.
Right, okay.
And if Martha and I can talk about it on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Then I'll let you know, Art and what aside.
DPW report. We have a couple bids, I guess.
Yeah, we'll start with the, and we're just gonna open these and I'm gonna give them to Mike.
Yes.
The first two are for paving of Buckhill Road. Uh the first two are for paving of Buck Hill Road. And Mike will be at the meeting in two weeks to discuss bids and who he recommends to. Yeah, no, I didn't bring my letter up. Work on these in advance.
This one's from Springfield Paving. And Carmont and Hampshire. Buck Hill Paving, starting at Shaftberry Park, Hollywood Park entrance, ending at the intersection of East Road. It's got all the specifications, one inch shim, so on and so forth. Michael, go over all of this. They have a total of uh two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. This price is based on current asphalt index as of six, six hundred and twenty one dollars per ton. And will be adjusted at the time of paving, so this doesn't even lock in a price. Wow, please, okay. So set that aside. That was two oh seven, is that right?
Two oh seven, six forty.
Two oh seven, six forty. And this one is. Peckham Road Corporation. Paving town, uh town hobby number six Buck Hill Road. One hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty five dollars and twenty cents.
Two fourteen, what was the last?
Two fourteen, eight fifty five and twenty cents. And this does not have a disclaimer that. I assume because it doesn't say anything, this is a locked in price.
Yeah, that should be, there would have to be what Springfield did, have it otherwise. This may be able to index.
Interesting.
Yeah. Yeah. All of these, you don't have to put back, you know, I don't, you know, I'm eating Mike's one then when.
Okay, Michael go over them.
These two, one from Kurt's Excavating and the other from uh. Uh Matt Morris excavating for the Trumbull Hill Drainage Project.
Matt Morris. Trumbull Hill Drainage Pro- Project. Stone line ditch install, water runoff, turnarounds, turnout, culvert replacement. Forty six thousand, four hundred dollars. From Matt Morris.
What was the last, forty six?
Forty six thousand, four hundred. Same thing, Trumbull Hill Drainage Project. Forty one thousand, two hundred. And this is Kurt's. Forty one thousand, two hundred, okay? Again, we'll give this to Mike. Anything else on DPW? Does, he was on vacation, so he probably didn't.
Yeah, he just got back today.
I haven't, I haven't had a chance to talk to him either.
Yeah, I've been ditching up on Myers Road and uh continuing to mow. And they're also doing some ditching up on Tinkamai Blum. Uh so that would just continue on while he was away. He's back, our new guy started today. Uh so uh we have the parks covered and building the ground covered for the summer. So uh we're in good shape.
Okay. Uh I had a conversation with somebody. Used to work for Daley, so he knows quite a bit about roads and that sort of stuff. He questioned whether. We're doing the right thing on Buck Hill by just shimming over some places that he says is so deteriorated that. He doesn't know if it'll stick or not, if it'll adhere to what's underneath or not, and so it's just run that past mine.
Yes, I will. Yeah, and there's, there's parts that, you know, there's, there's grooves.
Yeah.
Right in the road, so there's a leveling coat and then the, the shim coat on top of that. It's the edging you're talking about though, right?
Yeah, there's, there's some, just totally, totally gone.
I think part of it will be what we did up uh. By about the second bend where we cut out big sections.
Cut out the sections and.
And repaved them.
Yeah.
And then they'll pave over the top of that, but I want to find Mike to see.
Please, okay, yeah. Any other business?
I was just wondering, um so our next meeting is scheduled for June nineteenth, which is Juneteenth, which is a national holiday now.
Is it really?
Yes, and so I didn't know if we need to shift that meeting because it is a national holiday.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
So yeah, yeah, that is a, yeah.
It's the newest national holiday for us, so.
Give it to the town employees, so.
Yep, okay.
Uh.
So we'll plan to do it for the twentieth then, the select board meeting?
June, so our next meeting will be June twentieth.
Tuesday, June twentieth.
We'll see if we have any water. So this, the selectments meeting will be at six thirty and if there's a water board, we'll.
They'll put it before him.
We'll put it in before him.
I have one additional thing, uh after many months, we've come to a conclusion about the vent system at the. Transfer station, uh a new enclosure that will be delivered on site uh. Will cost about three thousand dollars. Uh it's being cobbled together professionally, but, but, but this company somewhere, I just lost their address. But Pat Smart from MS, hey engineering, uh it's been kind of a struggle finding anybody who wanted to get involved in this. You know, because it was not a, it was a homemade system. Uh that's how it was set up, so people were reluctant to get involved, but we found a company that will deliver it to the site. Entire enclosure, uh we'll just have to put in a concrete pad and drop it on top of it. Uh hire an electrician, wire it up and we'll be back and running again, so. Three thousand dollars is, is just an amount I can sign off on, but I think we're just gonna move forward on it. After he turns out to be cheaper than the amount of money we spent investigating what to do with it, but.
Yes, this is insulated?
I mean, they don't have to be insulated. I mean, all we have up there now is a inverted five gallon bucket. That's the science behind it.
Really?
Yeah, you know, that's what it is. Yeah, so this one has proper venting and proper uh.
Wow.
Pans for everything, having some closed, uh it'd be easier to test off of. Uh we have to make a small modification to it, which they explained what they had to do it. Uh so I don't think it takes any more work than uh having uh our electrician come up and, and wire it. Uh Pat will, Pat will provide any technical, uh but once we depower it, uh. It's not like methane comes pouring out of it, so we'll be able to switch it over. It's just very high when the fan is going. And we struggled a little bit with the pan last week, so.
It's getting close.
Yeah, it's getting close, so, yeah. I mean, it, it worked, can't knock it. I mean, inverted bucket with a fan lasted.
Years.
Yeah.
State of fruit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, no, they, they. They, it was a glowing letter about the design of it. I don't have much on the inverted bucket, but you know, uh.
Yeah.
Really weren't pressed, we didn't, you know, he was.
Yeah, engineer.
Yeah, so it was very well done, the system itself, but this part is uh, like I said, nobody really wanted to go near it because.
There's gas.
Yeah, that's the accident. This wasn't, you know. Designed, you know, or built anywhere before, so, so we got that straightened out, so we're gonna go ahead, uh get this thing delivered and. Have a whole new fan apparatus up there, so. Let's see, you know, we're doing this.
Do you need a motion on that?
No, this is under the amount that uh.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna bring you up to date because we voted on this.
Okay.
I think in October, so it's been a while.
Alright. Uh in my travels, I have seen a couple, one of them is in the town of Rupert. Which is a, the, the speed indicator telling you what you're doing.
Yeah.
And it's temporary. I mean, it's just on a. It's on a thing, it's got a pedestal, they put some sandbags down, it's got a small.
Right.
Small screen, have you seen them?
Yeah, they move them around.
And, and move it around. I just wondered if just something like that would, as opposed to a hardware.
Well.
We had to do in Jasper.
This is obsessive.
Yeah, okay.
Uh I wouldn't recommend doing this anywhere.
No, okay.
But you know, you see the easy mounts that are used in Arlington and Manchester that even have little smiley faces on them and everything. Those are much more doable, they're strapped to telephone poles, you can have them. Have battery packs and things, that's a much better way to go. Uh and because they're strapped on, unlike something that's like weighted down to the ground, there's less chance of someone. So uh.
I, I just.
I don't know, I'll look into them, but you know, the gentleman has at this point, uh. There's, there's disagreements whether they're effective or not. People get used to them and then they just drive fast out and see what they get.
Check my speed, I'm gonna.
Yeah. So you should know that none of them are really caliber. It's never really in the right speed, but um I, I'll look into them and then that's a good idea.
Just a, it's, it's something we could move around. Cleveland Avenue, you know, there's, we're all the time getting this from.
Yeah.
These people and if we just.
Yeah.
Could move something around.
And what you will find, I have years of experience, I'll tell you what you will find is people who live there. It, it, it is, you know, especially here, we have long rural roads, there's not really that many people cruising. Bank Street is different, you have, and you have people coming in from, you know, it starts with varying speeds through New York State, thirty five by. Then drops down to twenty five for the last stretch and uh.
Yeah, New York State's fifty five.
Yeah.
If it isn't both of it's fifty five, so.
Yeah, they switched it to forty when you come around the bend now.
Okay.
Coming in, because I saw that last time, I was coming in at fifty five. You know, I, I think it's gonna take time, but I think the sheriff's operations will be a lot more effective and.
Yeah.
Really, the only way to get compliance is to issue solvency. Uh that's what traffic is and uh. You know, the signs are great, we usually use those signs, used to put them up on the road, mount them. And then leave them up for a week and then set up like a quarter, half mile down below the sign. And people would come flying by us at fifty miles an hour. And say, you know, well, they'd be like, what, don't I get a warning? How fast were you going by that sign up there? Well, you know, but that was just the sign. It's like, well, that's kind of the warning, you know, uh so. Uh you know, without some enforcement on the other end, you're not really gonna get compliance. I think part of the problem around here is the, the, this kind of. You know, lack of enforcement and that's. If I don't think I'm gonna get caught, I'm less likely to be that concerned whether I'm doing twenty five or forty five. It's nature.
Okay. Any other, other business?
No other others over here.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Nope.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Keep going here.
Oh yeah, we got a lot, a lot to do.
It's a busy agenda.
Okay.
So uh with much to executive session, uh. For Mr. Wadworth and the audience, uh if we go into executive session, there'll be no vote as we come out, so we normally uh lock the Zoom meeting now.
But thanks for coming.
Good to see you. Bye.
So motion to adjourn and then we'll stop the recording.
Entertainer motion to go in executive session for real estate.
So move.
Move by Mike.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carried five zero zero.